Thank you, Honorable Chair. I approve motion number 7. Resolution approving the conduct of the bloodletting, blood typing activities with the partner agencies on 26, 27, 28 September, 6, 23 October, and 23 November 2023 by the Philippine Red Cross Osami's Chapter in Osami City. I now yield to the Chairman of the Committee on Health and Transportation, Honorable Catherine C. Lim, to introduce an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Catherine Lim is now the two nights for the chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Majority Floor Leader. I would like to pass this resolution approving the conduct of the blood typing and bloodletting activities with the partner agencies on 26, 27, 28 September, 6, 23 October, and 23 November of 2023 by the Philippine Red Cross Osami's Chapter in Osami City for first reading with reservations.
For first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This resolution, the Philippine Red Cross Osami's Chapter, will conduct the blood typing and bloodletting activities with the partner agencies such as Philippine Statistic Authority this coming September 26, LGU of Osami's 27 and 28 of September, Members Church of God International, October 6, Barangay Council of Baybay San Roque, October 23, and lastly, LTO Osami's this coming 23 of November. Due to its urgency, I move to pass this resolution for second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Presenting with the Honorable Lim to pass this on the second and final reading. Due to its urgent demand, I request this resolution as being presented. More for its approval on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Is there any comment? Remarks? Hearing none, motion approved on the second and final reading.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I approve motion number 8. Resolution approving the delivery of walk behind transplanter on 6 October 2023 by the Philippine Center for Post-Harvest Development and Mechanization Arten Filmic in Osami City. Honorable Chair, I now yield to the Chairman of the Committee on Articulation, Honorable John Sackin, to introduce an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable John Sackin is now recognized for the chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. A resolution approving the delivery of walk behind transplanter on 6 October 2023 by the Philippine Center for Post-Harvest Development and Mechanization Arten Filmic in Osami City, Honorable Chair, on first reading with reservations, Honorable Chair.
On first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, on the second and final reading. A resolution approving the delivery of walk behind transplanter on 6 October 2023 by the Philippine Center for Post-Harvest Development and Mechanization Arten Filmic in Osami City, Honorable Chair, with weaving the internal rules. Entend motion.
More by the Honorable Sackin to pass this on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules as being presented. Any comment? Remarks? Hearing none, motion approved on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I approve motion number 9. Resolution authorizing the local chief executive Honorable Henry F. O'Millan Jr. to enter and sign on behalf of Osami City the memorandum agreement with the Commission on Elections, Osami's Committee of Osami's for the allocation and use of local funds in relation to the 2023 barangay and SK elections. At this point of time, I yield to the Chairman now barangay first, Honorable John Doctor, to introduce an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable John Doctor, you are now recognized for the chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. This resolution from our city mayor, a resolution authorizing the local Chief Executive Honorable Henry F. O'Millan Jr. to enter and sign on behalf of Osami City the memorandum of agreement with the Commission on Elections for the allocation and use of local funds in relation to the 23 barangay and SK elections. Honorable Chair, I move for first reading with reservations.
More by Honorable John Doctor to pass this request resolution on the first reading with reservations.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Since it is an urgent request and needs for immediate action on our behalf, Honorable Chair, I so move for second and final reading, weaving the internal rules, on joint motion, Honorable Chair.
More by Honorable John Doctor to pass this on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. This resolution authorizing the local chief executive Honorable Henry F. O'Millan Jr. to enter and sign on behalf of Osami City the memorandum agreement or the MOWA with the Commission's on Elections, Osami City or the Committee of Osami's for the allocation and use of local funds in relation to the 2023 barangay and SK elections. More for its approval on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Is there any comment? Remarks? Hearing none, motion approved on the second and final reading.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I approve motion number 10. A resolution approving the conduct of the Centenarian Program payout on 20 September 2023 by the DSWD Region 10 in Osami City. I now yield to the Chairman of the Committee and Senior citizens and persons with disability, Pedrally, Honorable Cecil Yoko, to introduce an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
Honorable... Cecil Yoko is now recognized for the chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. So I move to pass a resolution approving the conduct of the Centenarian Program payout on September 28, 2023 by DSWD from the Region 10 in Osami City for first reading with reservations.
For first reading, reservations, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So for this payout, Madam Chair, we have one centenarian in the person of Juanita Cabaitan Suazo from 50th barangay who turned 100 years old last June 24, 2023. So she will be the recipient of this centenarian program payout on September 28. So in order to present to her this gift without delay, I move to pass this resolution on second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Presenting with the Honorable Yoko to pass this on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. This resolution approving the conduct of the Centenarian Program payout on the 20th of September 2023 by DSWD Region 10 in Osami City. Who is the centenarian?
Juanita Cabaitan Suazo from 50th barangay.
Cabaitan Suazo?
Mama or grandma? Grandma, siguro ni Marlo Suazo? Or Agwada?
More for its approval on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Is there any comment? Remarks? Hearing none, motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I would like to bring before this Osbade this ordinance that is supposed to be the 11th item for insertion, but I chose to separate this because of the degree of importance and urgency of this ordinance, Honorable Chair. This is the ordinance regulating the franchising of motorized tricycle in Osami City. I move this motion to include this in our order basis as an even item for insertion, Honorable Chair, to open the avenue for discussion of this ordinance. I move on this motion, Honorable Chair.
Approved on joint motion.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I now would like to yield to Honorable Archie Romero, Chairman of the Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities, to introduce for first reading this ordinance, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Marcelo Romero. The second is now recognized for the chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Madam Chair, I move to pass this proposed ordinance, an ordinance regulating franchise of motorized tricycle in Osami City, Madam Chair. I move this for first reading and I recommend that this matter be open for discussion, Madam Chair, before I move for its final reading, Madam Chair.
The Honorable Majority Floor Leader in motion for...
First reading.
First reading. And more for it approval on the first reading.
First reading only, Madam Chair, and I recommend this matter for open for discussion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. The discussion of this ordinance will be during the second reading. So I would like to ask again, Honorable Archie Romero to introduce this ordinance for second reading so that this could be open for discussion before this Osbade, Honorable Chair.
To be presented to the second reading, Honorable Romero.
Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Madam Chair, I move to pass this for for second reading, Madam Chair.
Second reading.
An ordinance regulating the franchise of motorized tricycle in Osami City, Madam Chair.
More for its approval on the second reading.
Honorable Chair, this ordinance is urgent and the city mayor has instructed, directed the Chairman of the Committee on Public Utilities, Honorable Archie Romero, to speed up the acting of this ordinance. Actually, during the first draft of the ordinance, I was designated as the Chairman of the Board. But during our meeting at the office of the City Vice Mayor Conference Room, I offered my reservations because this board is a policy determining body which should be safely be under the office, the executive department. And I belong to the executive department. So I asked Attorney Aria to review my chairmanship to ask the mayor to change me to not be the chairman, Honorable Chair. So this new amended ordinance now, the chairman of the board is Attorney Sam Puentes, the city administrator, and I am only the co-chairman. I'm sorry, my designation was not very correct. I failed to edit my name. Only the other provisions, Attorney Marcelian Sitapayan, Majority Floor Leader. I asked the group, was the inti- the mayor, then I will be the chairman first. The group told me that mayor only wants that I have, I will have the active participation in this board as Majority Floor Leader. So it does not necessarily mean that I will be the chairman. So the members of this board are Honorable Masiro Isra Miro, the second, Chairman of this, Chairman of this, this also a representative of City Traffic Office, President of the Almuda, Assistant of Motorcar Drivers, as you ask Mr. Wendell E. Inaan, the head of the City Traffic Management Office, and the city directorate will be the City Traffic Office. Honorable Chair, there are certain amendments I introduce. I have to explain before this Osbade. And there are also amendments being introduced by the City Traffic Office, that's why they are here. You see that on this particular ordinance, Honorable Chair, on section 5, the requirements. Because in section 5B, it says no tricycle should be exercised under all supporting applicable physical requirements are complied with certified by Julie authorized committee created with the purpose. There will be a committee to inspect the physical appearance of the vehicle as well as its road ortheness, Honorable Chair. So I instituted a provision whereby the election committee will be composed of the following: Chairman Mr. Wendell E. Inaan head, and members, one representative from the committee division, and one representative from City Traffic Office. This committee will inspect the motorcar, the vehicle, subject of the franchise, and will determine its road ortheness, Honorable Chair, and all the accessories in the vehicle as required by the LTO. So that's why I instituted this composition of the decision committee. And I asked the Attorney Aria and Honorable Archie Romero regarding the intention of the mayor about the screening. And the board informed me that the board will conduct an interview same as in the public mall on the all applicants of the franchise. So I instituted a provision also 621. After receipt of the list of applicant applicants, plural, applicants who complied with all the requirements, the board shall convene to determine the schedule of the interview of all applicants. Then after the city directorate, city directorate, meaning the City Traffic Office, will send notices to the applicants through AONC and social media within 10 days before the scheduled interview. And in the interview, the screening applicants shall be based on following criteria to be determined by the board members. Report of the decision committee 25% discipline character and law of emphasis 25% license experience and regulatory code 25% knowledge and familiarity of traffic laws and regulations 25% a total of 100%. So these are the silent pieces of the ordinance. The the office of city officer also added certain amendments on section 4. Third eye. In relation to the payment and the above city ordinance, there shall be payment of the motorcar plate of 250 pesos. On the renewal and section 7. Because we know that the franchise shall be valid for 3 years in the ball after the receipt period. It shall be renewed within 10 days after expiration. And the penalty imposed shall be applied after until the 130 day from the date of expiration. And the City Traffic Service shall make an annual inventory of abundance loss and declare the same for new applications. So this is the final draft of the ordinance, Honorable Chair. I now open the discussion for my colleagues regarding this ordinance. There might be some areas we fail to consider on this ordinance. We have to accordingly amend it now because I saw the urgency being required by the city mayor on this ordinance. The Honorable Romero asked the mayor about the timeline. And I was told that the mayor told them to if possible, pass this ordinance last session, last week. But Honorable Romero refused due to the need for further discussion on this ordinance. That's why we have a meeting last week with the city treasurer and concerned staff, the committee division staff, Honorable Romero and members of the leaders of the Almuda, the motorcar drivers association, as you know, meet with the Inaan, the City Traffic Management Head. We have a meeting last week with Attorney Aria to to try to finalize the final picture of this ordinance. And this is now the final draft, Honorable Chair. So I would like to ask the intelligence of my colleagues for the very short period of time given to them to process and determine the need on this ordinance, Honorable Chair. So we will now open the floor for discussion after this, our city treasurer is here with her staff to answer any queries upon my colleagues regarding this motorcar franchise. Can the staff of Mam Napikit open the discussion? Because there is a requirement here that after the submission of applications, the city directorate, which is the City Traffic Service, will submit all these applicants with complete requirements. The requirements are the requirements are the requirements are like police clearance, like barangay clearance, na poe barangay investment, which is different. Voice and demonstrations and affidavit of no franchise. This affidavit of no franchise will come in picture only if the motorcar unit was previously abandoned. Abandoned, because we have amended we have amended the ordinance that if the if the parties are abandoned, the unit cannot be applied by relative of the abandoning possession with a 6 degree condition. Perdeynya mga hatas ng anak yang iagaw para makutis franchise wala sila kabayad sa mga fish of pinati. So muna mo time mo inter the fixing affidavit of no franchise. Kaya ang ilik-likian nga ang motorcar unit yabod na nawa na by dog fish itasbi rasa yang palinti per applyan of no franchise muna atong ilikian. So may mo sa affidavit nga lihi sa palinti sa atong ta'ya sa motorcar pagi-bandon.
Okay, at this point in time, uh...
I move to to second the rules.
Uh, that chair would like to acknowledge the presence of our treasurer, Mama Rachel, our auditor, Mam Napikit, and Mr. Datulaita.
Could you start by passing this Osbade, Mam? Atong pa'agi sa pag pasising sa mga permit application sa franchise of motorcars. We can start with that, Mam. Kung sa'tong pa'agi karon sa City Traffic Office.
Yes, uh, this ordinance an ordinance regulating the franchising of motorized tricycle in Osami City. You have a copy of the proposed ordinance? Okay, very good. So the chair is open now for discussions on this particular ordinance.
So we give the floor, Honorable Chair, to the staff of Mam F. Julina Pikit kung sa'tong pa'agi sa pag screen na takaron sa mga applicants sa City Traffic Office.
Ini Mam Napikit, I think you will be the one to discuss nalang ano or any one of your staff.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Um... The procedure in applying for the new franchise is we're going to first um ask for the requirements for all the, this list of requirements shall be asked from the applicants in section 4. For a uh, these are the requirements, the documentary requirements of applicants and renewal of franchises application form, the CTMS clearance certificate of registration and official receipt must be updated and original copy, 10 voter certificate must be a registered voter of Osami City, and barangay certification and barangay endorsement, community tax certificate or the Cidula and the police clearance and the professional driver's license, photocopy of it. Then affidavit of no franchise is stating that he she is not a relative of an operator who abandoned a franchise or MTOP covering the same motorized tricycle unit.
Kaya naang may mga franchise niya di abandon na so kinahanglan dili siya uh wala siya dili siya relative atong holder atong naabandon nga franchise. Kaya aron to evade bitaw ka ng uh, namang tui uban nga gaabandon dayon just to evade the penalties and abang nga gipakuan lang sa relative lang di happy salain nga tao. So kinahanglan lahi good siya as in clean good nga applicant ni siya na wala good siya abandon dili siya mupalit or dili siya mukuha atong franchise nga wala good siya relative nga and holders sa abandoned franchise. Then the affidavit of no franchise is only required when a new applicant intends to apply for a franchise of a motorized tricycle unit that was acquired from an operator of an abandoned MTOP.
Sige, eh, padayon ni ko ano
Go ahead, Mam.
Ni Mama Rachel ang uban. Uh...
Actually, the next would be um, physical inspection of the motorcar. And we have Mam Cecil here as representative of CTMS, which is as representative of CTMS, which is very familiar with how they used to inspect the details of the motor, which is like the engine and chassis, and maybe you can, sir, I'm Mam Cecil.
Mr. Wendell.
During the inspection...
Wendell Iran.